You ready? Call meeting in order. Compared to please stand for a opening prayer and let them.
Well, that's great. Really, Father, we just thank you for this day and for all that you do for us and all the favor, God, that you just bestowed upon the city and this community. I always pray, God, that you would continue to guide and direct us in all the business that we take up for us to be with us and give us wisdom where we need it. And just your continued favor and blessing upon this community in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Let's be just civilized, United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We have a full room tonight. That's exciting. Close enough to me. Am I good?
We're good.
We're good. Uh, I'd like to open it up for citizen participation. Those that wish to speak to something that's not on the agenda tonight, please step to the podium and you'll be given three minutes to speak. State your name and address.
Hey, how are you? It's the first time I've ever done this. So, uh, my name is Michael Lackaby. Uh, I live at seventy fifty-two West Farm Road, one eighty-two. Mm-hmm. We just moved, we just built a home out there. Um, and so, since I only have three minutes, I first want to express that, uh, how much I love Republic. Uh, we moved here on purpose. Uh, born and raised in Springfield and was excited for the opportunity to even be a part of the Republic community. And so, uh, part of that was how beautiful it is where we live and we love that. And, uh, the biggest concern that I have right now is the trail that has been mentioned several times. I'm new. I moved in in August. And so, uh, just talking with the neighbors, this has been an ongoing thing of wanting a trail going down. Um, what is Elm Street in Republic, Formula one eighty-two as you go east of town there. Um, the, you can tell on the nervousness of my voice that I don't, I don't like conflict like this that much, but, uh, you know, I'm not, I'm an American. I love that we started in prayer. I'm a pastor. Uh, and so, part of being an American is knowing that when we buy land, it's kind of ours. And, uh, I love easement. Easement makes sense. Civil engineering, uh, if I got a drainage issue or the city of Republic has an issue with power or, you know, we don't even have internet out where we live, that would be cool, um, to have that. Um, I'm, I'm fine with easement. I understand that, uh, especially in a, in an extremely, uh, developing community like ours, one that's growing. But, um, uh, as I said with, uh, Andrew and the guys, as we, we met in the, uh, meeting we last had, um, I, I have three reasons why I would like, uh, request that the trail be done away with or diverted. Uh, tho- those three reasons is number one, neighbors. Um, my, my home is about three hundred feet off the road. It's really not going to impact me other than just taking that front part of my land. Uh, my kids run and play on all that. I know it's by the road, but we use, like, all of our land with our chickens and our dogs and those types of things. And so, this isn't selfish. Uh, when I talked with Andrew and the leadership that I got to talk to, they kind of, they didn't, they, it was not aggressive. It was great. It was a great conversation, I think. Um, but it kept coming back to, I, I, I felt like they thought I had selfish motives for this. Um, but Benny and some of our other neighbors, they're only like a couple dozen feet off the road. So if you take ten feet of a trail, plus I'm, I'm guessing construction's gonna at least deal with five feet on each side. Let's just say twenty feet. Um, Benny and Dustin and Anna, JD and Mary, they're not gonna have a front yard. Um, there's a white house on the north side. Uh, it, it looks kind of like a century home. It's an old farm home. That is their front yard if a trail goes in there. Um, and so, it, it really is, that was my biggest concern, was these people aren't even, I mean, the, I like to get up and look out my front yard and, and, or on my porch and drink coffee and not see recreation from strangers like that. I love recreation. We're, we're all for those types of things. We use the parks and all those things.
You have three minutes.
Yeah. Okay. So, uh, it's also governing overreach. It's, uh, it's overreach in the sense that it is not, uh, a, a reasonable use of easement. Um, it is, it's, it's taking our land to invite the public onto our property, not to, uh, benefit, um, the, the city for what the city needs to use it for. And then, the, the third reason is safety. Um, I keep hearing that bikers use this road. I haven't seen one yet. I've lived here for several months. Uh, I asked our neighbors. It, the only bikers that use the road, uh, are during the summer, but also very few because it's a dangerous road. Um, and Andrew asked, for example, you know, what if we were to widen the road? Would you be against us using your easement for that? Well, no, that's, that's a sensible use of easement. Uh, but this is for recreation and, uh, I don't think the few bikers that would use it is a justification to do it. And so, um, for those reasons, I guess my question to you guys is what are our next steps? How do we actually, uh, prevent this from happening? Because they've already accepted a one point three million dollar grant without our permission. They've already had several meetings. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you so much for starting this.
Mm-hmm.
Because I heard what you said. I understand your concern. Thank you for bringing this up. The next step, I have to go look into it.
Okay.
Research that you brought up and you and novel issues. I'll get with staff. We'll figure out what the next step can do. We will reach out to you because you are informed of what's going on and we can continue to talk.
Okay. I just don't want it to be two hugs and a punch. I don't want it to be...
I'm not exactly sure of two hugs and a punch.
That means you hugged me twice before you say, "We're gonna do it anyway." So, Andrew already said in March, he's told our neighbors that in March, you guys are gonna come by offering money per property?
I absolutely understand what you're saying, but we do have to handle the time. We will be that.
Okay. Well, we have, uh, last thing I'll say is we have, uh, signatures from every neighbor, um, that said that they're willing to go all the way to condemnation, each home and each property, um, if you guys so choose to just push your way through. And then, we also have, uh, legal counsel and those things as well. And that's not a threat. We're just asking you to not put a trail in. Andrew's answer was, "What happens to the one point three million dollars if we don't use it?" Well, it goes to NIXA. Okay, well, let it go to NIXA then.
Thank you.
Do you understand?
I do.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Can you sign in on the paper before you step down?
What's our next step? Like, how do we get ahold of you as far as when we can have another conversation about it?
Me personally, I'm available by email on the website.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir. Please step to the podium. State your name and address.
I'm Lisa Roller and I live at six-six-one-eight West Farm Road, one eighty-two, which was the white home he was talking about at the end, right before you get to ZZ Highway. This is a family-owned farm. It's been there for over fifty years. I have the other Rollers sitting here. It's a four, two brothers, two sister farm. Okay? I've researched. Now, I'm gonna give you something to research.
Yes, ma'am.
You guys can go into your books or wherever you have to go, but there was a law passed in Jefferson City, Missouri, through council, through the senate, through the state. Don't remember? Don't have it in front of me tonight, but it was, uh, law one zero zero four. And it said if it was not for a school or a highway, that recreation did not count, whether it was an easement or anything else. Okay? That's already been determined. Also, there's a law here that I'm gonna read to you tonight that says, "We have some, uh, mature trees in our yard. Okay? They wanna come in another thirty foot onto the front," which is gonna be right in my front yard. "There was a tree planted for these kids' mom when she was younger. That's God knows how old. Okay? It's a mature tree. It's irreplaceable. There's another one that their brother's planted when he was in high school in Republic. So, for them to come in and wanna take down our trees, take down our iron gates, our fences, to come in on this side of the road, when y'all are running it up from Elm Street all the way up to Farm Road ninety-nine, and there's a hill there, guys, you can go look at it, to put in a pedestrian walkway where it's a eyesore and it's, it's a, it's a blind spot for to have children crossing on a bicycle or a walk trail or whatever, to come to our side of the road, to run it up, to tie it into Wilson Creek Battlefield Park, and you're already getting your roundabout. I get that. There's been accidents there. That's great. I'm all about recreation and for the kids and this and that. But like this gentleman, Michael, said, and he's our neighbor, "I see maybe five bicycles all year round on that street." And for you guys to tie it into Wilson Creek Battlefield, for them to meander, is what I heard from these gentlemen when we went to their meeting, "They wanna meander around and this and that." Well, meander it down Hines, where it runs up from Walmart. You guys have got the park there. He tells me they're putting in sidewalks. Well, okay, forget the sidewalks. Put in your bike trail. You can walk on a bike trail. You can skateboard on a bike trail. You can bike on a bike trail and run it up Hines, onto ZZ, and run it into the roundabout and into the park. Otherwise, like Michael said, "What are we gonna do with the one point whatever?" Well, we weren't privy to that and we weren't privy to the meeting in Republic because it was inside city limits and we're outside city limits. So, we're catching the butt end of all this conversation as far as I'm concerned, 'cause we weren't privy. And I talked to, uh, Evans, which they contacted a year ago, which is above your streets and highways and all of this stuff, and he told me, he said, "Miss Roller, if I end up taking on this project, I will be the one that's gonna be negotiating with you guys. And I understand about your mature trees." And there's a law here that I'm looking at on my phone that says you're not allowed to touch my mature trees. So, that's my concern. I'm, I'm frustrated at the fact that we haven't had good communication with city limits, without city limits, and all of that. You know, I respect our community. I respect you guys and I'm happy to be here tonight to say something, but this is a farm that's been there forever. And for them to encroach on my property, to put in a ten-foot blacktop, there's plenty of room right now in front of our gates for a ten-foot bike trail. But these gentlemen here wanna tell me that we gotta have grass on each side.
Thank you so much for coming in tonight and speaking to us. I absolutely will look into those laws. I appreciate you pointing them out.
Is there any way to get ahold of you by phone or is it just by email?
Well, email's the very best because this is a very part-time gig, so, uh, but ma'am, I will give you my word. You shoot me an email, you will get a response.
So, if I shoot you an email, we can set up an appointment?
We absolutely can.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Matt, can I say something?
Absolutely.
I don't know if it's my place, but I just want, just for the sake of you guys feeling heard, I do think about this a lot. Andrew has driven me out there. He showed me. I just want you to know that on city council, we're not just here and you guys are talking to a wall. Like, this is something that, in my heart, I would feel you. I grew up on a dairy farm in a town of three hundred in South Dakota, so I get land and I love it and I would love to preserve country as much as possible. I love progress, but I also understand what you guys are talking about and probably the emotions that you're feeling. So, I just want you to know you're heard. I think about this a lot. Actually, just last week, my husband and I had the conversation. I was like, "Babe, I just, I don't know. My heart hurts for, for that situation." So, I want as much information and we're, we're for the progress of the city, but we also, we wanna be for our people. So, I do know that Andrew is one of the best people out there, so he's gonna be great to communicate with, but I just want you to know you're heard, is really the point.
Yeah, as you should be. It's your property.
I just want you to know the council, we're just not a wall. Just, you're not bouncing off us, so.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to something? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and your address.
Thank you. My name is Mary Cromberry and I'm a director of nonprofit, uh, the nonprofit Ozark Greenways out of Springfield, Missouri. Our address is six fifty North Boonville. And we work with communities across our beautiful region and our state to advance trails. And I'm here tonight just to provide some counterpoints to further bolster the conversation that we're having in our region. We are in support of this trail. The trail segment is a part of our regional trail system, which is an important component of our transportation network that will help take us into the future. Trails do provide transportation options, create safe places for people of all ages to walk and wheelchair and ride their bicycles. They do put more eyes on the ground and studies have shown a decrease in crime and littering. And they are a sought-after amenity that will help attract the workforce that we need for our local businesses, our schools, and our hospitals. I've got three examples I'd like to quickly share with you to add a personal component as to why we like to advance trails in our region. First, how many of you have been to Wilson's Creek National Battlefield to walk around, see the sights? Great. Um, and to get there, you have to load yourself up in your car or your truck and maybe your bicycle or the strollers and whatnot. Um, and then you have to drive there and then you have to unload all that stuff to do what? To walk or bicycle. So, this project will help provide an important connection that will provide a transportation option to a recreation destination that connects us to our history. Two, I also have the pleasure of being a resident of this region. I may sleep in Springfield, but I live and play all over the place. Whether my family and I are floating the Findlay, riding the Frisco High Line Trail to Willard, or fishing up on Fellow's Lake, we, like many others, are outside often and are truly blessed to live here in the Ozarks. When my son was younger, we used to make several car trips each summer to y'all's awesome aquatic center. I now eagerly look forward to the day when my now teenage son and I can hop on the Wilson's Creek Greenway Trail in Springfield, Missouri, and come and visit our national battlefield. And if we're feeling ambitious, we can hi- hop on the Schuler Creek Trail, maybe grab a burger, some fries. And three, this trail will connect to the upcoming Wilson's Creek Boulevard Trail, which connects to Republic High School. A growing number of teenagers that are not interested in driving or riding the bus. And let's get real, driving is cost prohibitive for some families. This trail will provide another transportation option for our community's youth to get to school safely. In closing, let's all remember that many public improvement projects, like trails, take place in front of or the backyards of people that call this place home, whether that's sewer lines or trails or roads. I look forward to keeping up this kind, pragmatic conversation and staying forward-focused. That way, we can work together to build communities that serve us not only today, but into the future. Thank you for your vision.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to something not on the agenda?
You know what? I, I, I love it. I'm gonna close citizen participation if there's not anybody else. And I wanna say, I'm gonna totally, oh, wait, I'm sorry. I didn't see my, well, I'm gonna unclo- unclose. Come on up, sir. I'm not sure that's allowed by Robert's Rules of Order, but I'd have to research it.
My name is Bobby Dimmer. Uh, I live at one oh one North Madison, so I'm right there on the corner. Um, and, you know, I, like these other folks, I'm highly invested in, in Republic. Uh, I coach the high school boys lacrosse team. Bet you didn't even know we had one.
I do.
But I do.
Yeah, we, we do.
But I do. Um, so, we're, we're highly invested. I'm highly invested in the, in the young people of our, of our city. Uh, and in theory, I am absolutely not opposed to the, the walking trails. As many of these other folks, my family uses them too, dogs, bikes, all those things. But there has to be somewhere in between where we can achieve both goals, in which we can provide, um, what we've been told the citizens want. Personally, it's a long way from there to Wilson's Creek. If you've ever done that, that's a long way. And I don't know that you wanna push a stroller that long. But what we've been told the citizens want, I think there's gotta be a better way to be able to achieve that without coming into people's front yards, without coming in to my backyard and my neighbor's backyard. That whole space right there in that retention area, it's a green space for a reason. We don't have fences for a reason, because we like the trees, we like the open space, and we like that vision. As Michael said, we like to sit on the back deck and look out. Okay? There is a, there's got to be a way. And maybe it's more than the one point seven million grant. I don't know what it is. But there's gotta be a way in which we can achieve both goals that is, that is the least intrusive to all parties. You know, if I'm sitting in this lady's shoes, I, I'm in tears. My heart is broken right now.
Absolutely.
Uh, and, and I think it's, and I appreciate you saying that we're being heard. It doesn't feel like we have been up to this point because I think that the, the, the communication may have not been as good as it could have been. The first drawing that come out, came out, excuse me, is completely different than the one we saw at the last meeting. It completely changes the perspective of how the, the, uh, the trail is impacting these yards, uh, especially in towards the city. It, it doesn't change as much, I don't think, out towards the more rural area, but for us in, in Stony Creek, i- i- it impacts it significantly. So, um, I probably don't have any time left, but, but if anybody wants it, you can have it.
Bobby, thank you so much for coming up and speaking. Uh, anyone else wanting to speak on this issue or any other issue not on the agenda? Is it safe to close citizen participation?
Can I just say, you guys, you guys are one of the reasons Republic is so successful. Um, I'm not gonna go out on a limb and say that this community is booming because of its trail system. So, there's a lot more going on in Republic than thank God we have trails, you know, otherwise we wouldn't be a community.
So, to Bobby, Lisa, and Michael, I wanna thank you for coming here tonight. Uh, I, I, you know, I, I appreciate when people bring things to our attention. Um, here's the thing. I was taught pretty early on in my career, I'm a lawyer, I was taught not to respond to things I don't know anything about. I need to figure out about these laws that you're mentioning. I need to look into this. We need to dig into it as a council. What the next steps are, I don't know yet. And I'm not gonna blow smoke, but I am totally gonna use two hugs and a punch in the future.
It's good. I like it. And I, I am gonna use it and I'll claim it as my own, so.
I do have a question, Mr. Russell. If there's any more discussion on this, um, because it is inside city limits at one point and we're outside city limits at this point, we weren't privy to the first meeting, so...
That's one of the questions that's crossed my mind and I don't know the answer, but we'll find out.
Okay.
All right? So, with that, I'm gonna close citizen participation. I got, I got a meeting to run, Bobby. I got a, fifteen, fifteen.
Follow-up, fifteen, follow-up from the questions asked tonight. How will they be communicated and when might we expect them?
Uh, I'm gonna look into it over the next two weeks. There is Christmas coming up. I don't know if we're gonna have something to you before Christmas. You are...
We'll be contacted directly.
You are all welcome to email me for any updates, even if it's just for me to say I don't know anything yet.
You have an email you can give us.
It's on the website. I, I, I do this because I don't, I don't remember it. I'm sorry. Uh, but email me. Okay? So, we're gonna move on with the agenda because we've got a big agenda tonight. You are all welcome to stay and watch the whole show if you want. Uh, we've got some interesting things on. So, moving on to the consent agenda. I need... I need a motion and a second for the approval of consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Motion carries. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Six to zero. Moving on to boards, commissions, and committee schedules, we have a board of adjustment meeting coming up on December second, twenty twenty-one, a planning and zoning meeting, December sixth, twenty twenty-one, city council meeting on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, and then a follow-up city council meeting on January fourth, twenty twenty-one. Moving on to all business and tabled items, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of bill twenty-one dash seventy by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri, amending the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately three acres from agricultural, AG, to multifamily residential, R-three, located at six oh two North Oakwood Avenue.
Thank you, ma'am. Staff presented last time. I believe Ms. Haynes is here to cover this. Are there any updates or anything we need to know?
No update.
Any questions or discussion from council?
No.
Seeing none, I need a motion and a second for the final passage of twenty-one dash seventy.
Motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Please click refresh, cast your vote, and hit submit. I'm gonna put my glasses on so I can see the screens when they pop up.
I know.
Yeah, don't worry. Here, hold on.
Can't get the thing to...
You can just touch it.
Yeah, touchscreen.
Just touch the screen.
Touch it with my finger?
Yeah, you can touch it with your finger.
Okay.
Go ahead, touch that.
That's submitted.
Thank you. There you go. You got it?
I think so.
It's delayed.
Go ahead.
It did not go in.
It did, then, it...
Yep.
There we go.
Motion carries, six to zero. Moving on to, that's right, right, six?
Yes.
All right. I pay him to be here. Um, item number four on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of bill twenty-one dash seventy-one by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to enter into a public donation agreement with United Pentecostal Church Republic, formerly Apostolic Life Center Incorporated, UPCR, for donation of land to the city.
Thank you, ma'am. Staff presented on this last time. Do we have any updates on this issue, Mr. Bicker? Thank you. Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, we will move it to a, well, I need a motion and a second for the final passage of bill twenty-one dash seventy-one.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our touchscreen computers. Motion carries, six to zero. Moving on to item number five on the agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of bill twenty-one dash seventy-two by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri, approving budget amendment number three to the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, I understand that there is a memo that has been prepared and submitted and is in our red files. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at that?
So, what's going on with the memo?
Hello. Megan Cook, I'm the finance director. So, we did make a couple changes, um, to the previously, um, proposed budget amendment. Uh, we have added a part-time executive assistant to assist with the city administrator functions, and that would, um, equate to about five K for this year. And then, we have added land acquisition, um, in the amount of four hundred thousand for the MM expansion. And this was originally budgeted in the twenty twenty-two budget, so we're just proposing to move it into the twenty twenty-one and to go ahead and try to close on it to meet the needs of, uh, the department.
Excellent. Do we have questions or comments or discussion from council on those issues? I see Eric down there making a face. I didn't know if he had a question. It's my normal face. Um, but just clarify, you were, you were just, the, it won't change the budget going forward. It'll just be moved accelerated a year.
Yeah, the four hundred K is just to move it basically from maybe closing in January to December so that we could go ahead and meet the needs of all parties involved.
If there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion to amend bill twenty-one dash seventy-two by the language in the memo. That's awesome. It is awesome, actually. So, do I have a motion?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to amend the bill twenty-one dash seventy-two as noted in the memo. Specifically, I move to amend bill twenty-one dash seventy-two by increasing the total expenditures in the general fund to eight million, eight hundred and seventy thousand, eighty-five dollars. All is set forth in the amended bill twenty-one dash seventy-two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Now it is amended. Now we need to do a roll call vote. So, right?
Motion and second first.
I'm getting there. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call vote. We're making it. Please click refresh on your commu- computers, cast your vote, hit submit vote. Motion carries, six to zero. Moving on to item number six on our agenda, uh, this is a public hearing. At this time, I will open up the public hearing on regarding appropriating from the revenue of the City of Republic Missouri expenditures in accordance with the fiscal year 2022 budget of the City of Republic Missouri, and providing for adjustments thereto. The way this public hearing will be is I'll open it up, anybody wishing to speak for it will approach this podium and speak for three minutes. After everybody that has done that, we will talk to anybody that is against it. Is there anybody for it? Is there anybody against it? Public hearing closed. Moving on to item number seven, Megan Stanbeka. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 21-73 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six to zero, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic Missouri appropriating from the revenue of the City of Republic Missouri expenditures in accordance with the fiscal year 2022 budget of the City of Republic Missouri, and providing for adjustments thereto.
Are we going to amend this one too?
We do.
Could you tell us why?
Yes. So, on the general fund, we made a couple changes. We added a 50,000 salary study so that we can review, uh, the salary structure, and then we also, uh, included the part-time executive assistant to account for that for the full 2022 year, um, and that's around 50,000 as well. We also removed the 400,000 to the street fund, um, for the land acquisition because we moved that to the 2021. And so the net change is around a decrease of 299,000.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Cameron.
So I'm going to speak to the executive position that we have, we've added to this budget, it's something that we have discussed, uh, for some time, and probably could have included it in the overall budget discussion, uh, back in 20, I want to say 16 or 17, um, we reclassified the position to move it away from the administration side and moved it to the Community Development Department, and so kind of I was without the position, this is a part-time position, and so the opportunity presented itself, um, through Ms. Rachel Veitch, um, who is a, has assumed this position, uh, for us, and an opportunity presented for her to have a part-time position where she could do this for us on a part-time basis, and I think that that will be a great addition, so the musical offices we've played at City Hall in the last week was to facilitate that. Um, I think it's a position that will continue to advance what we're doing, it'll obviously free up my time significantly when it comes to just scheduling and programming. Laura did a fantastic job, but it, when you're considering how fast we're growing, uh, and the things that we have to schedule and program, I think, uh, Ms. Veitch will be a great addition to our team.
May I ask you a couple of follow-up questions?
Sure.
Um, so you cut your own administrative assistant in 2016?
Seventeen.
And so you've been doing the work yourself?
Well, I mean, I've kind of shorted out, Lisa's been kind of the quasi HR director, uh...
Let me ask a different question.
Yeah, so yes, I've had someone helping me to, I mean, and Laura's been, I've kind of used everybody to kind of help out.
How many employees does Republic have right now?
One eighty, we're going to one eighty-two, we had one thirty when we started.
Are you familiar of any other CEOs of companies that have 182 people that do not have an administrative assistant?
No, but we had to do what we had to do to get the city moving in the right direction, so we're reallocating it, and Connie was a huge part, she moved over to the Community Development Department, so it was really revitalized what that department has done for the city, so, no, we, it's, I would not say that's normal.
And do you feel comfortable we're in a space where we can afford it now?
Oh, absolutely, yep.
Do we have other questions from council about this issue or anything else on this? Excellent. I would entertain a motion to amend Bill 21-73 by changing the budget to forty-two million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars, all as set forth in the amended Bill 21-73.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six to zero, we will now, I will ask for, uh, a motion and a second for a roll call vote.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for a roll call vote on Bill 21-73. Please hit refresh, cast your vote, and hit submit. Did I cover everything?
You did.
Thank you. All right, we have a budget for next year.
Yes.
Motion carries, six to zero. Thank you very much for all of your hard work, I mean, seriously, this was, this was big. Moving on to item number eight on our agenda, I'm double-checking my work here. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 21-74 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six to zero, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic Missouri amending Title Eight fees, Chapter 805 fee schedule.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, just so we can stay consistent, I understand there's also an amendment to this.
Correct.
Let me look at that. Do you want to educate us about this as well?
Sure.
Excellent.
Sure.
All right, so we made a cou- a few changes on some of the build fees, um, they decided to go back through and review them just one more time prior to approval, and with that, they decided to, um, change the architectural review for direct reimbursement of consult, or of the consultant, because I understand that there is no building official now, which is why they, is that correct? Yes. Sure.
Good evening, Andrew Nelson, builds administrator. Uh, so we went back and had to reassess our fees because we had hired a building official, um, and that gentleman ended up not taking the position, so where we were going to have in-house fees that were much cheaper, now we're going to have to go back to what we were already doing, which was having reimbursable fees charged for commercial, uh, plan review. So, uh, for instance, um, I'm trying to think of the last one we did, maybe like an Amazon, that'll go to a, an architect for a third-party review, and then we bill those fees back to the developer, so we, we've gone back to what we were doing before without that position being filled. And then there's, there's some changes to our impact fees that are also proposed here, and that's a reduction. So I think last meeting, it was Councilmember Mitchell that mentioned, uh, competitiveness with the region, so what we did is we went back and we got a little bit bigger than our region, uh, and I found that there were some that we wanted to be a little bit more competitive with on our impact fees.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Yes, sir.
Is there any reason why we shouldn't try to find another person to fill that in-house role?
We will, uh, i- it's our intent to fill that position, but in the meantime, I wanted the, the ordinance to reflect the way we would capture those fees, and if we did fill that position, we could always reduce the fee, uh, to be appropriate, but to charge more than would be a little bit more difficult without the ordinance being appropriate.
Thank you. Any questions on this issue?
Mr. Mayor?
No.
Mr. Mayor, so Andrew, with a question, I would, just from flexibility, say we hire somebody two months from now, is there flexibility in the ordinance that allows you to go ahead and do that without having to come back and do a rate, like, just go ahead and include the rate? Should you hire the position instead of having to come back, like, why not just leave it in there and have both options if we do find the position? Would there be anything wrong with that?
I would have to ask Damon. I think, um, I think it was our opinion previously that we could always amend less than provided that the, the fees that we were charging were representative of what it cost us.
Sure, I'm just trying to make sure you've got flexibility that if you find the position, you, now you've got the rate already established.
I'm a hundred percent in support of if we need to include both.
If you are wanting flexibility, I would probably suggest considering revising some of the wording.
Okay.
Does anything is pressing that we can't do it at the next meeting?
There's not.
Because, I mean, to me...
They're, they're effective in, in 2022, so there's no immediate...
So we have one, so what I would suggest, my, my recommendation would just be to amend the ordinance to reflect that if you find somebody two months, it just, it would evaluate and go back to the rate that you're wanting to establish.
Okay.
Just from, gives you the room to do it, and when, because maybe next August you find somebody, but...
Yeah, no, they're, these are effective 2022 rates for everything that we're proposing, so there's no, we can amend it.
Table, till the next meeting.
Yeah.
You on board with that?
Yeah.
So that's good when your attorney's like, eh!
I don't have policy opinions.
Fair enough. Very good.
All right, so given that information and given what we just discovered, I would entertain a motion to table Bill 21-74.
I'll make a motion to table that until the next council meeting.
Thank you, good catch, Eric. Uh, we do need a date, don't we?
The December 14th.
14th. All right, so we have a motion to table Bill 21-74 to December 14th. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six to zero. Moving on to item number nine, which is new business, the public hearing specifically. At this time, I will open up a public hearing regarding approving the annexation of approximately two acres located on South Farm Road 101 between East US Highway 60 and West Republic Road and the adjacent right-of-way. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of that? Is there anyone here wishing to speak against that? Seeing no one approaching this podium, public hearing closed.
I like these public hearings, man.
It's legal.
It is.
All right. Moving on to item number 10 on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 21-75 by title only.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six to zero, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic Missouri regarding approving the annexation of approximately two acres located on South Farm Road 101 between East US Highway 60 and West Republic Road and adjacent right-of-way.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Haynes?
Thank you. The property owner of Green County Highway Department has submitted the voluntary annexation request for the subject right-of-way. The rese annexation of approximately, uh, 92 acres of property located at the southwest intersection of East US Highway 60 and South Farm Road 101 effect- effectively annexed the portion of right-of-way directly adjacent to that property. Uh, most of the property to the west has already been annexed through development in previous years. This annexation would effectively annex the remaining portions of right-of-way between East US Highway 60 and West Republic Road. Uh, those are the areas that are, um, dashed, um, in the exhibit before you. Uh, the annexation of the reference right-of-way will allow the city to make all development-related decisions regarding the street. The builds department has reviewed the impact of the reference annexation and anticipates no negative impacts on the 2022 street budget. We are recommending approval of the annexation.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, please remember this is a first read, so if you have questions, get with staff before the next council meeting. I am now going to proceed to another public hearing. At this time, I will open the public hearing regarding approving the annexation of approximately 10.20 acres located at 7294 West Farm Road 144 and the adjacent right-of-way. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of that? You're messing up my flow, man.
I'll make it quick, I'll make it quick.
No, you're good.
I'm Ricky Haas with Olson, uh, representing the applicant as well as Convoy of Hope that is looking to purchase the property, um, here to answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions from council about this?
550 East St. Louis, did I say that?
Thank you, you did not.
Okay.
Laura was going to catch you, though.
He wrote it on the paper, I hope.
There you go.
This is the rugby location?
Yes.
Okay, that's awesome.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone wishing to speak against this? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Proceed to, sorry, I'm messing up the bamhammer. Uh, all right. Proceeding to item number 12 on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 21-76 by title only.
Motion. Second.
We've got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six to zero, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic Missouri approving the annexation of approximately 10.20 acres located at 7294 West Farm Road 144 and adjacent right-of-way.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Haynes?
Thank you. Um, as we indicated, the Springfield Rugby Football Club has submitted the voluntary annexation request for the subject parcel. City of Republic Sanitary Sewer Services and Water Services are available directly adjacent to the property, that's the, um, the parcel located in blue, which is now the new location of the Convoy of Hope facility. Uh, the subject parcel is compact and contiguous with the city lemons of Republic, as you can see, it's directly surrounded by the city lemons on both sides. The annexation of approved by the city council will effectively zone the subject parcels agricultural, which is what is zoned currently in the Green County zoning designation. Um, we do require that as part of, um, our annexation ordinance. Staff does believe the annexation of the subject property is consistent with all of the city's adopted plans, and we are recommending approval.
Any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Just a comment, uh, again, I want to thank staff, Olson, Convoy, and the rugby club. This was a huge concession, uh, as part of this overall development, was Convoy wanted to have this property, and the rugby club has been out there for a long, long time, and they have no real reason to move, and so I just appreciate their willingness to work with Convoy and everyone that's pulled that together, and the efforts by Convoy to find an alternative site that even didn't work the first time, and have now found a location that will work for the rugby club to relocate, so I just want to commend everybody because that's been a, many would not even know the work that's gone on to make that entire campus a reality, but that little parcel right there was one of the biggest pieces that was needed to bring together, and the rugby club have no reason to move. There's no real incentive to do it, but they were willing to be a part of the overall, and I just commend them for that, I just, I love that people see the vision and want to be a part of it, and for staff, I know you've worked very hard on helping find a place to relocate that rugby club too, so Ricky, everybody, thank you.
Hearing that, any discussion from council? Please remember this is a first read, so get with staff before the next meeting if you have any questions. Moving on to item number 13 on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 21-77 by title only. Don't laugh at her!
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six to zero, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic Missouri amending the employee handbook.
Thank you, ma'am. Are you okay?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lisa Addington, Chief of Staff, um, it's very exciting to come before you this evening with these changes, um, proposed changes for the handbook. Other than minor wording changes and some page number updates, in preparation for 2022, we are recommending the following additions and modifications. To Section 210, we are adding some clarification to that section of conflict of interest, which will say, "or any other relationship that creates a potential or perceived conflict." Uh, Section 404, holidays, we are asking the addition of Juneteenth, which was declared a federal holiday in 2021. That will also amend with that addition of that holiday, that will amend Section 403 for the police and fire accruals. Since they are continuous operations, that additional holiday eight hours will be added into their accruals. Section 415, retirement, so in addition to loggers, now that the budget has been approved, we will be adding the employer contribution into the deferred compensation, the 457 plan, um, that will be effective in or around, um, on or around April 1st. And then the last section was section six oh four, tobacco. We are asking for clarification on the designated smoking areas to be at least fifty feet from any city property entrance location. So happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions from council? All right. Seeing none, please remember this is a first read, so get with, get with who you need to get with. Moving on to other business, specifically item number fourteen on the agenda. This is twenty-one dash R dash fifty-eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic Missouri to review, amend, and approve the five-year capital program. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-one dash R dash fifty-eight.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ma'am.
Hello, Megan Cook, Finance Director. I'm here to bring the resolution before you for the five-year capital improvement program. We amend this every year, and we review it in accordance to the budget process. So this is just a list to provide the capital needs of the city for the current fiscal year and four years thereafter. If there's any questions, I am available to answer any.
Do we have any questions from council? All right. Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can move immediately to a vote. So all those in favor of twenty-one dash R dash fifty-eight?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries six to zero. Moving on to item number fifteen on our agenda. This is twenty-one dash R dash fifty-nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic Missouri authorizing the city administrator to enter into a contract with Reddick LLC for consulting services. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-one dash R dash fifty-nine.
Motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second.
I've got it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I communicated, I believe, a couple of weeks ago or a couple of meetings back, was the momentous opportunity to continue to work on the wastewater plant where we're looking for a hundred and fifty million dollars to try to offset the cost to our citizens. There are a number of ways to navigate through that, and we've asked for consulting services to help as we try to figure out what that's going to look like and to make contacts and try to navigate through the process. And so admitting where there's a great opportunity, the money is well spent because if we could get anywhere near a hundred and fifty and try to offset the cost to our residents, like I stated that night, that when you see a utility bill that could be fifty-two dollars or potentially a hundred and thirty-two dollars, it's very important that we put our best foot forward, work with all the resources we can. I believe this, this individual, this group will help us get there. But I'll answer any questions, or Andrew can answer any questions, but.
Any questions from council? Mr. Franklin.
Do we have any experience with this company before, or is this kind of a new?
No, I mean, it's just, it would be completely new to us, understanding the landscape of how the funding works and what, and how you have to proceed with it. Very knowledgeable individual to do this work. And so it's not a lobbyist. There's no registered lobbyist. You'd have to register, so. But it's someone that understands how the funding processes work. And for us to have those meetings and those communications to assist us in that process, very familiar with it. He has extensive, Royce Redding is his name, has extensive ability in this area.
Other questions from council? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can proceed to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries six to zero. Moving on to item number sixteen on our agenda. This is twenty-one dash R dash sixty, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic Missouri execution of an amended agreement for attorney services. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-one dash R dash sixty.
Motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second?
I'll cover that one, too. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you know, we are nearing the hiring of a full-time city attorney. Damon has been with us since June and just like on the fly came in and saved the day and helped us out tremendously. But at the same time, in the, in the transition to a full-time city attorney, Damon's going to stay on and continue to work with us and help us in certain areas, but also at the same time will be exceeding where we said how much money we'd be spending through that process. So we just agreed that we would extend the contract until we get kind of settled in with the new attorney. But I think that that'll be a great addition for us. I think you've done a fantastic job. And I think it'll be really helpful for our new attorney, so. I'll answer any questions with that. This is more of a paperwork formality, but it's something that we needed to do instead of just kind of leaving it closed.
Any? No, I was, I was asking.
Our winter.
Do we know that?
Yeah, I think we're still.
Are you still?
We're still waiting for the qualifying.
It's tentative right now. We are still in post offer, but a tentative start date would be December twentieth.
Okay, that's awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, on a personal note, I just absolutely cannot count the number of times that Damon Phillips has, over the last nineteen years, jumped in and helped me out. So this is just another example, so thank you. Appreciate it. No problem.
No problem.
It's been problems in the past. He's just not talking about it.
Well, there was that time your car needed a jump start.
As this is a resolution, we can move immediately to a vote on twenty-one dash R dash sixty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. They sounded very forceful on that, Dave.
They just want the meeting to end.
There's a, moving on to reports from staff. Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to give an update. We have the S and P call for those that are just wanting to geek out on the O S and P call. We're going to be doing the rating call and then the due diligence call on January twelfth, if that's correct. And so I believe they're set at eleven and twelve. For anybody that wants to listen or participate when an S and P call is and talk about it, we're proud to you. But that's just telling you that we're moving relatively fast on the underwriting to work on the wastewater plants. We're staying to keep you out of jail.
Thank you.
And so, but we are, we have met with Stiefel over the phone, worked on the funding. But when you start looking at these numbers, and again, what the impact could be to the community, we got to work very hard to find additional funding, and we'll work very hard to do that. But we are going to proceed with the first forty-five million, and so that will take place on January twelfth. Welcome, Rachel, to the, to the city. This was the first day of pure chaos for her. But she's going to be, we've got musical offices. I'm not kidding. If you could just see it, it was like, wow, we have every space. I will tell you, I know this is not a priority on our discussion tonight, but we're going to have to start talking about space in the City Hall facility. We've got people in the back. It would just put them everywhere. But I just want to say welcome to the city. Looking forward to working with you and the team. Great job on the budget. I said this last time. I'm going to geek out a little bit because sometimes I'm one of those guys that watches other cities just because I enjoy laughing to some extent. I'm not going to say where they're at at all. But when I see that they've taken three or four days and they're into eighteen and twenty-four hours of discussion on every single item, I want you to understand what you're watching and what you all are doing is something extremely special. I'm not taking away that it doesn't require due diligence. I appreciate the trust and the value that you bestow upon us, but I appreciate the work. Jared and everybody, Megan, everybody that put in on the budget to do your best to showcase how we get to those numbers. And then also we showcase how we're accountable for the money. And I cannot undervalue that at all. You all give us tremendous latitude when it comes to spending. And I mean that with, we don't come in here for every five thousand dollar bill. You allow us to do the right things with your funds. We have auditors to check that, by the way. And so I just appreciate the work that went into that. I mean, two hours and some of that discussion. I'm not saying that people didn't read it to take more work, too, but there was a lot of work starting in July to get us to where we're at. And so I credit both staff and this council and the way you govern through that. It's very rare. It's not normal, and I can just tell you that it makes us look better. It makes us look stronger, and I appreciate that. I want to say this about the handbook. When I got, when I arrived in Republic, the handbook was in a red line revision, and it had massive, massive, just, it was a mess.
A mess.
And so I want, Lisa, I cannot tell you enough how much that document is a guiding principle for us and why it keeps us in the legal council out of a lot of hot waters because it's well-written, it was well-drafted. And I thank you that you bring current updates to us to change it, not even thinking about the eight hours for the police and fire. Way to catch it is a great catch, but I think sometimes when you look at the budget and you look at things that we do, our processes, especially on the employee handbook, very rarely do you see them modified. And so to see it real fresh and relevant and changing all those things, we're navigating through difficult times. I just wanted to, to thank you. And I want to thank Mayor how you handle public hearings and meetings, navigating through. I think you do a fantastic job of listening to people and answer any questions that we have regarding the trail system. But I do want to, I do need to correct one small error that's in the report, and this is on me. I take ownership for it. Where it talks about the Ward One election signups. We cannot proceed with Award One election signups because we have not established an April ballot. So we've not even discussed an April ballot. So because this council's not approved one, we can't technically open up something that's not even been an official action taken by this, this council. So we cannot, there will not be a December seventh through December twenty-eighth signup because we would not even have enough time to get that approved to meet that deadline. So we have to do that by December seventh, and our next meeting's not till December fourteenth. And so there's no way to take up whether we'll even have a ballot measure, so therefore that is not, that is not accurate. Other than that, I'll take any questions that you may have. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Cameron? All right, seeing none, we will move on to reports from council.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I was waiting for you, Mr. Franklin. It's all right.
I'd just like to echo a lot of what David said, especially on the budget, you know, all the hard work from all the city staff. I meant to look back at my notes and see what the gentleman's name was, but I'm very thankful for the citizens that did come tonight and spoke with council. His, his, Michael, two hugs and a punch.
It's good.
Yeah, that, that was really good. But he mentioned, you know, it's a little bit nerve-wracking to sit up here and talk to us. And I would like to mirror that. A lot of times it's a little bit nerve-wracking and a little bit nervous to sit on this side and be able to listen to all of this. And so I really appreciate your comments, Jen. I appreciate the way you handled that, Mayor. Other than that, this weekend, there's more stuff going on in Republic than I could possibly go through right now, and I don't want to keep us all night. But if you're not volunteering or being involved in something Friday, Saturday in Republic, go online, look at, there's all kinds of stuff going on from the reindeer run to the Christmas tree lighting, the parade. There's a lot of good stuff, so very thankful for all of that. Thankful for this meeting tonight, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Any other reports from council?
I appreciate David and all that he does. I know he must stay up nights. He has to, but he's made a great improvement since he's been here. I've been through, I guess, almost every city administrator we've had. And we've had some good ones, and I don't say that we haven't, but I think he exceeds them all. And I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I appreciate Laura and all the time that she spends with the family. It must be hard to do everything she does and still be able to smoke.
Mr. Duncan.
One of the things that I remember, this goes back several months ago when the lady first came and asked us about being, setting up a group of people to try to put on the Christmas on Main Street. Because it's been several years since we've done anything. And I mean, it's just unbelievable, the momentum they've gotten and the number of people that have donated money, are volunteering to be there. I think, you know, it's really going to be something great for the city, and I appreciate them publicly. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. You know, Michael was right. It is scary standing up there talking to us. It absolutely is. And his three points were excellent. I mean, there's things that we need to look into, and that's part of my job description, and I will. You know, neighbors, government, overreach, and safety, those are legitimate concerns, and they should be addressed. And I appreciate Michael, I appreciate Lisa, and I appreciate Bobby coming in tonight and giving their thoughts. It can be scary standing up in front of a group of people. And they acquitted themselves well, and they should be proud of themselves, and we'll see what we can do.